Good morning. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barbara Johnson, Minneapolis City Council President. And before our meetings, I'm joined by my colleague, Councilmember Blong Yang. For our first event this morning, before our council meeting, we take time sometimes to honor extraordinary achievements in our community, extraordinary individuals. And today, Councilmember Yang has put forward a resolution honoring the North High basketball team for congratulating them on their state championships. So I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Yang.
Thank you. And you all can come up. Come on out.
Both sides.
Yeah, get both sides. We could get on the camera.
Someone can get over on the side.
Yep.
Today is just a very special day for myself, just because North High is located in Ward Five. And the struggles that North High has gone through in the last several years to get to this point is just really amazing. And so let me just read the resolution, but I just want to tell the team, Dr. Lewis, Coach McKenzie, I'm so proud of this team and so proud of North High School for the accomplishments. So let me start by just saying that this resolution is honoring the 2015-2016 Minneapolis North Community High School Polers Boys Basketball Team. I will save the whereas clauses, I will just try to read it as quickly as I can. The North Community High Polers Boys Basketball Team won the 2016 Minnesota State Class A Championship on March 12th, defeating Goodhue High School 68 to 45. This is the sixth state title and the 20th state appearance for the Polers. The Polers finished overall regular season, or their overall season with a 29 and 5 record and were also the city champions and the sectional champions. Minneapolis North Community High School has seen an academic and athletic resurgence since it was threatened with closure in 2010. This resurgence is due to the leadership of Dr. Sean Harris-Berry, the principal, Dr. Leo Lewis III, the athletic director, and other great teachers, administrators, and coaches. Head coach Larry McKenzie took over the struggling basketball program in 2013, and since then the Polers have won the Minneapolis City Conference Championship three years in a row. The roster in 2016 includes Eli Campbell, Pat Dembley, Marshawn Downey, Nasir El Amin, Marquise Holloman, Jamil Jackson Jr., Jameer Jackson, Isaac Johnson, Taylor Johnson, Tyler Johnson, Jaquan Sanders-Smith, and Odell Wilson IV. The coaches of the 2016 North High Polers Boys Basketball Team were head coach Larry McKenzie, varsity coaches George Ellis and Trent Witz, which I don't see, who I don't see today. Ah. And assistant coach Sherman Pedersen, one of our own at the city. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Minneapolis that the City Council on behalf of the people of Minneapolis hereby honor the 2015-2016 Minneapolis North High Polar Boys Basketball Team and give recognition to their outstanding accomplishments. Wonderful. Dr. Lewis, would you like to say a few words? And then I'm going to give it to Coach McKenzie, and then after that, we'll do the introduction of the players really quickly.
Thank you so much, Mr. Yang. I appreciate everything that you do for us and supporting us and coming to our games and making sure that you're competing for the number one booster in the city. Certainly on behalf of North High School, Dr. Harris-Berry, Coach McKenzie, his staff, and the excellent student athletes, just want to also commend them for all the hours of practice and toils and tribulations and all of the injuries that they had to overcome, but yet paved through through over 30 games this season. And all the traveling and getting out of school and being able to recuperate from that has been one of the things that I really commend these young people for. So again, we are such, in such a joy to be here and certainly want to be here in behalf of the entire school and Minneapolis Public Schools. Thank you.
I think so. I just want to say, Councilman Yang, thank you. And to all the city council members, thank you for this honor and tribute to these outstanding young men. I am really, really proud of all of them, and they hear it all the time, not only for their work on the basketball court because, but also they're true student athletes. And so I appreciate the hard work. And again, just want to reiterate what Dr. Lewis said. Councilman Yang is, definitely has been one of our biggest fans. I don't think he missed too many games at all. And every now and then he'd send me a little message on Facebook, giving me a little coaching advice as well. So, so we should have put his name on there too, on the assistant coach, but we appreciate it. And like I say, I'm just proud and it's an honor, in particular because, you know, four years ago, I mean, North was, I mean, the doors was virtually being closed. And I'm just proud that these young men decided to stay home, stay in the community, make a difference. And now they know that big things could be accomplished. You can still be small and mighty. So we're proud.
And we're going to have the players introduce themselves, and then, you know, after you all do that, we have a little breakfast for you, as well as a resolution for every single player in the school as well.
I'm Taylor Johnson, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Marquise Holloman, and I'm a junior.
I'm Tyler Johnson, and I'm a senior.
Jameer Jackson, I'm a junior.
Associate head coach, George Ellis.
Larry McKenzie, head coach.
Jamel Jackson Jr., I'm a senior.
Isaac Johnson, I'm a junior.
Pat Dembley, and I'm a senior.
Nasir El Amin, I'm a freshman.
Eli Campbell, I'm a freshman.
Odell Wilson, I'm a sophomore.
Leo Lewis, I'm the athletic director at North High School.
I just really want to thank all of you for joining us this morning, and hopefully your parents will watch on TV. And I just, I want to give a personal shout out to Larry McKenzie, who I have known for many, many years. Our daughters played basketball together since they were like in fourth grade through high school. And I remember when you came down, when Henry won the state tournament. And so I think all of us realize how important it is to have great role models for our young people, and we couldn't have a better role model than Larry McKenzie. So thank you. Thanks for joining us. order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
We have all members present this morning. So the next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda, adoption of the agenda. And I have a motion to amend the agenda in several ways. First is a motion by myself, and please add Councilmember Andrew Johnson to amend the agenda to include, under the order of motions, a staff direction relating to the Workplace Partnership Group. So is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. And then we also, I'll make a motion to delete number two under resolutions, and it's one of our honorary resolutions, that we need to light the 35W Bridge, and it's just not ready. So on that motion to delete, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. With that, are there any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda as amended would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 26, 2016.
So moved.
Moved and, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have referral petitions, communications, and reports of the city officers to proper committees and departments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the reports of the standing committees, and the first is Community Development Regulatory Services, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. There are 12 items on the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee for our approval this morning. They include item number one, which is the appointment of Noah Schuckman as the Director of the Regulatory Services Department for a period of two years. In addition to that, there are a number of bond issuances, liquor business and gambling license applications, as well as settlement suggestions for the Metro Inn Motel and a number of other issues. I'll note, item number 12 is the final design and budget and schedule for the Target Center renovation project. It's essentially everything except for the bond issuance, so I'd like to poll item 12 for comment and move items 1 through 11 this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services Report, all items except item 12, which is pulled off. So anyone have any questions or want to speak on any of those items, 1 through 11? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, on all, nay on 12.
We're not acting on 12 yet. That's pulled off. Of 1 through 11.
Pardon me. Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Those items are adopted. On item 12, Councilmember Goodman.
The new microphone system, it's kind of confusing. I'm going to move item number 12 and see if there's anyone who would like to comment. If not, I won't either.
Anyone want to comment on item 12? Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, and I made my line share of comments previously to this. All I'll say on this, I'll keep it short and sweet, with the whole parks funding issues and roads issues, I think this is an item that if the council chose to delay, because it extends the life from 2025 to 2035 of the facility, then we could have a more robust, holistic view of our funding needs in the city, and we wouldn't be bound with this spending of 75 million essentially from the city, or 74 million, and then additional commitments as well for ongoing maintenance.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that I think it's amazing that we've gotten to this point in time, and I respect the folks who feel that this is not something that they would want to support. I respect the argument that this is probably something that they wouldn't fund, but I don't respect the argument that there's a choice between this and something else, because there's not. This was an item funded through the Vikings deal, which I'll note I was against, which let excess sales tax only and specifically for the use of Target Center in the waterfall, followed by other economic development activity. So it's not like we could use this money for parks or roads or anything else. This is money that, and although this, what we're voting on now actually has nothing to do with the money, I would note, this is the gross maximum price, the guaranteed maximum price, the actual design, and a number of other items to make sure that we can move forward with a project that's going to happen yet this year. I will note that the, and I'm sure actually others who care about urban design would agree, that this renovation makes a major change in the exterior of the building. In addition to that, it makes a major change in the way pedestrians access the building, as well as cross 7th Street in a safer way. This project and this design allow us to have a loading dock that will facilitate concerts, quite frankly, like Sir Paul McCartney, who was just announced as going to be in the arena yet this year, who played a much larger arena right around the corner last summer. We need to have the building be successful for concerts, the Minnesota Lynx, the winningest team of all of the sports teams, quite frankly, professional sports teams in Minnesota. So this design is better, this money can't be used for anything else, like the kinds of things that have been suggested. And ultimately, it's our building, we're responsible. I can't imagine what the alternative would be. Buy out the contract with the Wolves and Lynx, have them move over to St. Paul, spend 10 million to demo the building and hope that we would have someone to come in and pay more than that for the building in that location. I just don't see it. And quite frankly, we have a lot on our plate as it is. This is our building, we are under a contract to maintain it to a Class A standard. By doing so, we improve the look of the building, the way it fits into the historic district, the way pedestrians access it, the way roads move around it, the way the loading dock functions within it. It is a complete win-win on a deal that was done, that I voted against many, many years ago. We have a responsibility to follow forward with it now, and we should do that today.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll on Community Development and Regulatory Services, item number 12.
Councilmember Johnson.
No.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
No.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
No.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes and 3 nays.
That item is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Glidden.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Get my glasses down. We have six items on our agenda. First is contact conflict of interest review for lobbyist firms. Item number two is an amendment to our federal policies agenda relating to, well, asking for the Center for Disease Control to conduct research on firearm safety and violence prevention. Item number three are some updates to the city's 2016 policy positions and legislative agenda, including some technical corrections and adding a statement that will allow us to seek diversification of revenue sources and investment options available to local governments, including cities. Item number four is another update to our 2016 policy positions regarding the public safety section of our policy positions agenda. Item number five relates to federal housing policy relating to sale of nonperforming loans. This would be approving a resolution requesting the Federal Housing Finance Agency to provide the city of Minneapolis with information about delinquent mortgages in the city, and requesting an expansion of its sales to public agencies, nonprofits, and small investors, and also requesting that federal agencies hold off on further sales to investors. And item number six is amending our federal aviation policy positions to include opposition to the privatization of air traffic control, and I will move the full agenda.
Council Vice President Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report, all items. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Excuse me, that report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today we have eight items for approval. The first item is an extension of an ordinance for the Small and Under Uplife Business Enterprise Program. Second item is the repeal of the congregating on streets and sidewalks ordinance. Third item is a MOU with the U of M Police for the MPD to make available tactical response equipment, personnel, and other resources during emergency operations. Fourth item is a reimbursement for training from the Minnesota Board of Firefighting, Training and Education. Fifth item is a revenue contract with the U of M for security services at TCF Stadium for Vikings playoff game that has happened already. The sixth item is a revenue contract with Minneapolis Public Housing Authority and the city of Minneapolis for the MPD to provide security services. Seventh item is a contract with Patrol with the League of Minnesota Cities for registration costs. And the eighth item is a contract amendment with the U of M College of Veterinary Medicine for police canine care. And I will move all items, and I will pull item number two.
All right. Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report, all items except item two. Anyone want to comment on the rest of the items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll on items 1, 3 through 8 on the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Those items are adopted. On item two, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have that many comments, but I was actually maybe deferring a little bit to Council Vice President Glidden. I just wanted to thank her for her work on this, and, you know, we worked together on this to, you know, look at the issue of congregating on sidewalks, you know, with regards to this. You know, I, I just feel like when we look at certain ordinances related to misdemeanors or petty misdemeanors or anything like that, I mean, I think it's really important for us to look at it within the context of the times now, and also just look at it within the context of whether it's constitutional. And so I would urge my colleagues to support this, and I will defer my, or I will defer to Council Vice President Glidden.
Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you very much. And I also want to thank Councilmember Yang for helping me as a co-author on the repeal of congregating on the street ordinance. I wanted to just take an opportunity to read a very brief letter, just because we did not have this at the time that the item was considered in the Public Safety Committee. And this letter was submitted, a joint letter signed by our police chief and our city attorney, where they said, "We're submitting the statement of support for repeal of the Minneapolis City Ordinance relating to three or more congregating that obstructs the sidewalk. The repeal of this ordinance will not pose any risk to public safety and has been used only rarely in recent years. We are both committed to appropriate reforms to help foster positive police-community relationships, trust, transparency, and accountability in law enforcement and the criminal justice process." And I just wanted to thank them for being willing to state publicly why they support the repeal of this ordinance. You know, when I read the language of the ordinance, I kind of had heard about it before, but I hadn't, you know, you don't often sit down and read the language of some of these ordinances. When I read the language, I have to say, I kind of put it in the category of, "I can't believe this is on the books," probably because it appears that I am violating this ordinance multiple times a day, and particularly when I wait for the bus, or maybe stand with a group of my council colleagues waiting to get into the room here. So I think that especially in a time when we are investing in every police officer on our department, being able to have the benefit of training about implicit bias and what that means to policing, this is exactly the kind of thing we need to do in getting an ordinance like this off the books, recognizing that even today it is rarely used. So thank you very much, and I hope my colleagues will support this.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam, to the, Madam President, and thank you to the authors, Councilmembers Glidden and Yang, for their work on this. I just wanted to make a couple of things clear, and I will be supporting this ordinance deletion. I think it's the right move, and I take it very seriously in that while congregation in and of its, there's nothing at all wrong with congregation on the sidewalk, and we should very publicly recognize it, especially given the disparate impact that it has on people of color. But I, we, I did some research, and there are several other ordinances that, that do allow police to move people aside so that they're not blocking the sidewalk. So if there's the concern that somehow by deleting this ordinance, police will no longer have the authority to move people, to prevent people from totally blocking the sidewalk intentionally, well, that concern just isn't there.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll on Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management, number two.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That item is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 10 items today. Item one is the Washington Area Residential Resurfacing Project and amending that project designation. Item two is the Central Core Light Rail Transit Project Amendment to the Support and Funding Agreement with Metropolitan Council, extending the terms of that agreement through 2016. Following items refer to the Ways and Means Committee. Item three is the Standish Area Residential and Howe Area Residential Resurfacing Project Approval and Assessment. I'll note that Councilmember Andrew Johnson will be extending a motion that's before you to extend repayment or payment for that for one address. Item four is the unpaved alley resurfacing program west of Zerces Avenue between 28th Street West and Cedar Lake Parkway, and that's approval of the project and the assessments associated with it. Item five is the 8th Street Reconstruction Project Contract with Lion Engineering Incorporated for an engineering design services. That's authorized negotiation and execution of that contract for the amount listed. Item six is the E38 Street Reconstruction Project Agreement with the Minnesota Commercial Railroad for Crossing Surface Installation with Minnesota Commercial Railroad for the amount listed, for the surfaces that are indicated in that project area. Item seven is a road maintenance agreement with Hennepin County. It's a pass resolution authorizing an agreement with Hennepin County effective January 1st, Item nine is the Hennepin County Bicycle Sidewalk Grant Program Funding Applications. And item 10 is the bid for fine aggregate, and that's the low bid from Fisher Mining Incorporated. Madam President, I move all items for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. I know Councilmember Johnson has the amendment to item number three. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The amendment is just simply extending the payment period for specific property in the area of resurfacing. I appreciate that's being included with the rest of the items.
Councilmember Johnson has a motion in front of you to extend the pavement, payment, excuse me, program, payment period during the street resurfacing assessment for a property located at 4234 Dade Avenue and extends it from five years to 10 years. Any discussion on that, or is there a second on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Then on the Transportation and Public Works Report, as amended, any discussion? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. There are 11 items on the Ways and Means Agenda for your consideration this morning. Item number one is the Disposal of Surplus Property Ordinance. This amends that ordinance relating to disposal of surplus property to allow donations of the city of Minneapolis' personal property. It also has a second action, which is asking procurement staff of the Finance Property Services Department to develop a policy and procedure for disposal of that property and shall report back to the Ways and Means Committee by the end of June. Item number two is a defense and indemnification of Officer Blaine Leonard in the matter of Luis Daniel Garcia versus Blaine Leonard and the City of Minneapolis. This approves the city's staff's denial of defense and indemnity pursuant to Minnesota statutes. Item number three is a legal settlement for Jesse Mclemore versus the City of Minneapolis. Item four is a Contract Amendment with the Domestic Abuse Project for 24-hour domestic abuse hotline services. Item number five is a Memorandum of Agreement with Local Initiative Support Corporation for Consultation Services. Item six is a Contract Amendment with Lynn Anderson for Professional Leadership and Project Advisory Services. Item seven is a bid for rainwater storage and irrigation system retrofit project at the Convention Center. Item number eight is a Contract Amendment with Common Sense Consulting to provide leadership development and cultural intelligence training. Items nine is a contracts with three different recruitment services, their service vendors to fill various IT positions. Item 10 is a Contract Amendment with Sagetti USA LLC for Workforce Director Application Software. The final item, number 11, is the issuance of term loan note for Target Center renovation project. This is, in an essence, a line of credit with Wells Fargo that should save the city in excess of $2 million in the financing of the Target Center renovation project rather than relying on the issuance of bonds and paying interest on that. So it's a financial move that should save us a couple million dollars. So I have to move all 11 items.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
No on 11, aye on all others.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No on 11, aye on the remaining.
Kano.
No on 11, aye on the rest.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the report except for number 11, which has 3 nays and 10 ayes.
Those items are adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Report and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have six items from the Zoning and Planning Committee. Item number one is granting an appeal for a front yard setback for the Moxie Uptown at 1121 West Lake Street. Item number two is denying an appeal for a conditional use permit and variances for the same Moxie Hotel. Item number three is approving the Street Vacation and Alley Easement Agreement for portions of Main Street Northeast and 30th Avenue North. Item number four is passage of an ordinance amending our code of ordinances for heritage preservation to simplify the required findings for certificate of appropriateness applications. Item number five is approving the Linden Hills Rezoning Study and adopting staff findings as well as passing an ordinance amending our code related to those zoning updates. Item number six is approving an application to rezone the property at 1121 West Lake Street and 3005 Emerson Avenue South to allow for the Moxie Hotel. And I will move all six items.
Councilmember Bender has moved the Zoning and Planning Report and I would just note that I think we have a typo in number three. It should be 30th Avenue Northeast, not north. Am I right? Councilmember Reich?
That's, yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. That is noted as well, the correct address is noted in.
In the, yeah, in the body.
That is correct. Thank you.
Any discussion on the Zoning and Planning Report? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Those items are adopted. Next, we have the Introduction and Referral Calendar and the first item is pursuant by notice, it's pursuant to notice, "I'm introducing the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to license and business regulations, tobacco dealers for first reading and referrals to community development, amending provisions related to tobacco dealers' licenses in the C1 zoning district." Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, pursuant to notice, "I'm introducing the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to personnel for first reading and referral to the Ways and Means Committee, amending provisions related to severance pay for appointed employees." Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Glidden to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code for first reading and referral to the Zoning and Planning Committee, amending regulation, regulations for these, for establishments that provide free food, clothing, and services. So we need unanimous consent on that. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Under resolutions, we have the 2016 Garden Club of America Honorary Resolution that's in your book. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We've deleted, deleted item two just because it wasn't ready. On item three, we have the 2016 National Blue and Green Day Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We have the Earth Hour 2016 Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution supporting Earth Hours 2016? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We have an honorary resolution for the 2016 De La Salle High School Boys Basketball Championship. Councilmember Frye, they're coming in, in two weeks, is that correct? Councilmember Frye? Okay. They'll be here in two weeks. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the 2016 North High Polers Basketball Honorary Resolution that we presented before the council meeting. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a resolution honoring our former legislator and congressman, Martin Olaf Sable, who passed away this last week. And I'm sure this is one of many, many resolutions that'll be passed at levels of government across this state and in Congress, I'm sure, actually. We lost a great figure in our congressman. He always watched out for us, in particular, the city of Minneapolis. And what I always thought was so remarkable about him is, as powerful as he was, you know, being budget committee chair, all that sort of thing, you still thought of him in your head as Martin, you know? And he answered your phone calls. I mean, he was just such an amazing man. And, you know, when you read things that you didn't know about that he did after retiring even, it's just, it's a great loss for our community. So we have an honorary resolution that we will send to Martin's family and services are tomorrow for Martin Olaf Sable. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. And I think we'll take a moment of silence just to remember our great friend and congressman. Thank you. Under motions, we have a motion, myself and Councilmember Andrew Johnson have a motion that's in front of you to include, excuse me, directing, this is with regard to the Workplace Partnership Group's recommendations. We had a very wholesome discussion in the Committee The Whole on Wednesday about their recommendations, thanked them for their great service to the community by listening to all people that were interested in participating in potentially, or in suggesting a roadmap for a sick leave ordinance for the city of Minneapolis. And so this motion by Councilmember Andrew Johnson, myself directs the city coordinator and the city attorney to organize, convene, and lead a multi-department work group to review and respond to the recommendations of the Workplace Partnership Group for a municipal policy on earned sick leave, including drafting an ordinance for municipal earned sick leave